Good evening. This is the Village of Cooperstown Special Meeting on December 6th. We have a couple items on the agenda first, and then we will be opening the public hearing on our cannabis legislation. Would everyone please rise for the pledge to leave?
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
I made a motion to approve the appointment of Jesse Bravich, who's the current alternate on HPAR to the HPAR Board, fills a seat of Mark Burshon. And second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
And in your packet you had the information on the exterior firefighters insurance policy. At our last meeting, Fire Chief Jim Paulman had presented this information. In the state of New York, exterior firefighters are not mandatory for having the cancer coverage or long-term disability. We have sixteen firefighters that would qualify for that category. I've gotten premium information, and that is provided to you. I move that we cover our exterior volunteer firefighters, the same as our interior volunteer firefighters, for coverage at an increased cost of $2,121.60.
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor? And I need a motion to approve my reappointment
Done if we do not pass opt out, then there's no law. They can't just request a referendum on this. So the village would have to pass opt out law. And then we can turn around in the very next vote and say, we want to put this on the ballot. So all the residents of the village can vote at the March election. That means people don't have to go out and get signatures on petitions. We just give the option to all the residents of the village. If we don't pass an opt out, then you, there is no referendum procedure. Is there?
No.
No, they can still do that.
No, unless they can only try petition for a referendum.
If we opt out.
I thought I said that. Maybe I didn't say that correctly, but that is what I.
That's what, that's what I was asking. That's what I was applying. We don't have to vote. We, board does not have to put the referendum on the ballot. If there's, if we opt out, there's, there's a referendum may be held either by the board or either by board's votes or by petition of the citizenry of Cooperstown if they want to opt in. You're with your, so my question is, you're aware that the op, the option to opt back in, if we, if we opt out is available without the board actually getting involved?
I, my understanding is I think that if you opt, I don't think that's right. I think if you opt out, it gives you extended time and other options. And I'm aware you can always opt back in at any time.
Right, but we did have to pass opt out legislation.
We have to, I didn't say we wouldn't, I just say if we pass opt out, the referendum need to be put on the ballot by the board or put on the ballot by petition by the citizenry. That's all.
That is correct. If we do not pass an opt out. I just want everyone to sort of understand it because it was covered in that webinar we, we did for everyone. If we do not pass an opt out, then it's, we're in.
That's right.
It doesn't matter and an opt out has, this law would have to be passed by December 31st of this year. After that, it doesn't matter if you want to try and have a referendum on it in March. It's too late. So that's what we're trying to use. So that's why we, we just wanted the public to know this.
And, and when would you, they'll go.
You have to speak louder.
Yeah, turn that machine off. Everybody can hear better. I'm basically saying, I support opting out so that you have more options. And that we spread the responsibility for this decision amongst the entire community. And then everybody had their chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. So that was an exciting little chime there.
Yes.
Up in Waller, 66 Beaver Street, Cooperstown, local resident. First of all, thank you for your service and your time. I'm not here to talk about legality or the pros and cons of marijuana. That's already been decided in the state. I'm here to talk about what and how it affects Cooperstown and why I feel you should opt out. First of all, it will not bring any additional tourism to Cooperstown. The increase in tourism in Colorado came because they were the only show in town. If you wanted marijuana, you came to Colorado. My friends in Colorado, a friend of my district attorney there says, that's why people come to Colorado to buy marijuana. You should keep it out of state because of the federal laws. So second of all, I urge you to opt out because you don't know what the regulations are yet. The commission who is starting this, according to my contacts in Albany, hasn't even met yet as a body. They've met in small gatherings, but according to Senator Morello, we have months of delays and disagreements about how they're going to formulate the regulations. I don't know what you're opting in for. I mean, I really don't know what the regulations will be from the state. Talking about state regulations, Colorado, one of the states with the longest experience in this, has already gone through three major legislative redo of their law. And there's one pending in the legislation right now, another redo of their law. So this to be settled or finalized is absolutely ridiculous. It is not. This is a work in progress and it, major changes are coming down the road. However, once you grant a permit for somebody to build something and operate a business here, you're not going to be able to take it away. State law is very, very firm on that. You can't change it midstream. That's just not fair and it's not fair. Because something is legal, it doesn't mean it's permitted. There are a lot of things that are illegal in New York state that we don't do here. We don't have Dunkin' Donuts here. You're talking about marijuana. This is, this is very interesting. Law enforcement of this is a difficult situation. Our local law enforcement will not be able to pull someone over and arrest them for driving while impaired under marijuana. Because in order to do that, you need a drug enforcement officer who can actually test people for marijuana. Right now, if you get stopped by a police officer because your tail lights out and he smells alcohol on your breath, the police officer, if he's qualified, and it's a very simple way to qualify most police officers, all of ours are, he can do a field sobriety test based upon the results of that field sobriety test. He can deduct an actual alcohol consumption test and issue you a DWI ticket and prevent you from driving right on the spot. If a police officer stops a vehicle and he smells marijuana, he cannot do that in the state of New York. He's not allowed to do that. Just because you smell like marijuana, doesn't mean you're high on marijuana. An example of that is my son-in-law out in California, had one of his employees, he works in the kitchen. He's a chef at a hospital. One of his employees fell and cut herself. Went to the emergency room and a part of that testing, they determined she had THC in her bloodstream. So he asked the doctor, are you going to certify that this was due to the drug? Or this is due to an accident? And he said, I'm not doing anything. Because we don't have any ideas how much in the bloodstream would make you intoxicated to the point that you would not be able to do your job. So he could not collect on, or deny any work with compensation to this person. Yet the person was probably high on marijuana, which is why she tripped and fell. We don't know. Driving down the freeway in San Diego, I was in the HOV lane doing 65 miles an hour, but the six other lanes were doing 25 miles an hour because there was a car in the middle lane doing 25 miles or 30 miles an hour. I thought it'd be a little old lady and it wasn't. It was a young gentleman sitting behind the wheel. When I went home and talked about this, found out that that's probably what it was. They tend to drive slower. But the most serious thing was while we're in San Diego, my wife complained, we're sitting by the pool. It smelled like a skunk. She didn't know they had any skunks in San Diego. And I say they don't. What they have is marijuana. And unfortunately, there is a, a compound inside marijuana that when it's burnt, smells like the skunk. But it also smells like the additive we add to propane to detect propane leaks. And my DA friend in Colorado tells me that their, their volunteer fire departments are being called out on odor complaints. Now, a volunteer fire department or a police department is not, not going to respond when someone says, I smell gas. So our volunteer fire department is going to be showing up in people's neighborhoods because they're going to smell this. And as you walk down Main Street, our children are going to be asking, Mom, how come Cooperstown has so many skunks? That's what you're going to end up having. And so the image of Cooperstown is certainly going to suffer from this. There's no doubt about it. Because you could pass an opt-in for selling marijuana in Oneana, in the town of Oscego, in Maryland, in Schenevis, and that'll make the Oneana star. But you pass a marijuana opt-in in Cooperstown and you're going to have pot and pop flies okayed in Cooperstown on the front page of the New York Times. Because we are the most perfect village. We are the home of baseball, a family sport that attracts families from around the world to come here. Not pot. We attract people here because this is a family community. Opt out now and we can have a referendum. We can let the people decide. We can look and see what the state permit and regulations are going to be. And if this looks like a good economic venue for Cooperstown next year, you can bring it up again and we can see how far we go. I don't think the state is going to stop you. I don't think the state knows what they're doing at the present time. So how are they going to stop you? And if they did stop you, what are they going to do? March in here with the National Guard and arrest you all? No, they're not going to do that. Of course not. So opt out, please. Opt out now and let us talk about this in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
Yes. Josh Edmonds, 45 Delaware Street. I was born here. I live here. I work here. I raise a family here. I didn't really have a lot of control on what New York state did. But as resident of Cooperstown, I would really encourage you to opt out. I think it's the last thing we need here in the village.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Molly Perelman. I live on Weatherstocking Street. I think that you should not opt out. There are some points made tonight. We're not talking about whether or not it's good or bad to smoke marijuana. People are going to do it here regardless. So I think that the idea that like this will make, this will make Cooperstown like this big pot place is a little bit like scare tactics. People are going to get it no matter where. They have for, since everyone on the board was young. And we have, we have like liquor stores right near the baseball hall of fame. Liquor has proven to be a lot more dangerous for kids than marijuana. So I think that that point's not really a seller either. I think that it only offers opportunity in a place that for young people, for people looking for jobs, for, you know, there, we need more opportunity here. So I would encourage you all to opt, or not, not opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
Hello. My name's Noah Johansson. I was born and raised here. My address is 280 Main Street. Um, I guess from a personal standpoint and without addressing anyone specifically, having worked in the tourist industry and really growing up in it, I'm confused as to why people think tourists would be turned off by marijuana. My experiences, they come here, they get absolutely wasted. They drop their kids off at Dreams Park and then they kind of party at the rental houses. I don't think anyone's getting turned off. Personal experience, as someone who grew up here and had to find alternative ways that were not legal to find marijuana, the two options were you would go into one of the many kitchens in town and buy drugs there. Or you would have to drive 15 minutes out of town to a country road. You know, you wouldn't have service. Your parents wouldn't know where you were. The cops wouldn't know where to go. You've never been on this road. And you would just kind of hope that things worked out. So from that standpoint, I do think it would be safer to have a more centralized location as people are going to purchase it regardless. And it would also do a lot to undermine the people that are selling drugs from getting alternate revenue sources for, you know, when they sell worse things like fentanyl or heroin or cocaine. They lose that revenue stream. They also lose access to younger kids that they might, you know, want to push those things on in the future. I think it's only a good thing. But that's based on my personal experience as a resident here. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Yes.
My voice is almost gone. Can I pull this just to sleep? Whether or not you opt out, my suggestion is simply, my suggestion is simply that we consider this as if you were considering alcohol. Two, uh, that we look at statistical evidence, not anecdotal evidence. You know, I saw a guy who was stoned, et cetera. Because you want to make a good decision. Not a decision based on the fears of other people. I have, oh, I'm David Drow and I live at Weatherstocking with the other province. And we're, I think that we need to recognize that this is not a mysterious drug about which we know nothing. We know as much about this as we do alcohol.
Yes.
I'm Eric Stengler, 60 Grove Street, and I just wanted to add two thoughts about this. One would be the fact that we have a substantial student population in Cooperstown. And I know from experience, I teach them, part of them, that they go out and get marijuana from wherever they have to go to. And if they are, if you make it even easier for them to get it, it, I, it would make things even worse. I have had experience of teaching them knowing that they're half high or totally high. And that's not a pleasant experience. So that's for once. The other thing is, I think we should look at this as an opportunity. Most of townships around the state will not opt out. And therefore, we can single Cooperstown out as a place where marijuana will not be available and it will be a marijuana-free place where people can come where if they don't want to stand this fence and, and be put off by the whole atmosphere that's created around smoking marijuana. So I strongly encourage the village to opt out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Bill, you, you already spoke.
Yeah, but I just like the correction thing.
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you.
When you're ready, if you want to go through a little more, and I have some more statistics I can talk about.
Okay. I would like everyone who would like to speak to have a first chance to speak in case there's anyone else. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yeah.
I'm not a resident of the village.
That's all right. We'll listen to all of you, but that's one reason we ask for your residents.
So my name is Jennifer and I'm a resident of the town of Hartwick. So honestly, I have an opinion on what your options are, but Hartwick's already opted in. So, um, that was their decision. Just a couple of things from some of the comments I've already heard. I would just really ask you to make this decision not based on what a lot of people think marijuana is. Unless you've had a personal experience with it, you don't know. Um, I have never had a sip of wine, so I don't know what wine does to me. I don't have an opinion on wine. I just don't want to drink it. So please make your decision based on some facts. And it's really, this comes down to financial situations. Families come here, like someone said, they get wasted. Doesn't matter if their kids are here or not. That's what they do. Um, marijuana is still going to be legal, so it's still going to be smoked up and down Main Street and it's going to be here. So whether dispensaries are here or not, doesn't change anything. Um, I don't know if anybody's on the board has ever been to a dispensary. It's like walking into a hospital. You know, there are a bunch of drug addicts sitting out on the side of the street waiting to get in. Um, super structured. There's one right in Utica. They will let you come in and walk around. Um, so very structured, very clean. Everything is organized. You're not touching anything.
I'm sorry. I needed a point of clarification because no retail establishment has been licensed or legal. So what is?
They are there. You can go with a medical card.
Oh, a medical.
It can go, yeah.
Medical prescription.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Um, but the dispensaries, so I've heard in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, they're all the same way and they're all recreational as well. So it's not this dungeonous area where, again, it's not like that. Um, we have bars here. Marijuana lounges are the exact same thing as bars. Um, dispensaries are the exact same thing as liquor stores. So again, just please don't make your decision based on, um, the aura and the fake feeling of marijuana or marijuana smokers. So.
Thank you, Jennifer. Just a point of reference, and I did mention that we can regulate time, place and manner. Then those are being formulated as to exactly what that would look like in our zoning code. But right now, the village of Cooperstown already has smoking ordinances for tobacco. You aren't allowed to use it in our public parks. And cannabis cannot be regulated different than any other product. So whatever sort of applies to tobacco, we could also have applied cannabis. So that can regulate the smoking. So again, we want to hear the concerns so that, and it is important for us to look at our zoning law and figure out how to handle this. We know that that is something that is valued by our residents, that the tobacco and cannabis smoke is not something that they want to be smelling walking down Main Street. And we would be able to regu, do some regulations on that. Is there anyone else? I guess.
I'm Lisa Mooney, 38 Nelson Avenue. I'm a mother and a pediatrician. And I do not like public speaking, but I do not like marijuana more than that. So that's why I'm here tonight. I've never smoked marijuana. I will never recommend it to my patients. I tell my patients it's a big lie. It's supposed to be a nice relaxing recreational thing, no problems. There are lots of problems with it. And, and I know that's not why we're here today, but that's one of the big lies about it. The big lie for you guys right now is the, the financial results from it. I, I think if you opt in, we will see much decrease in our tour, baseball tourism. I am a mother. I would not want to bring my family to a, a town where there's open marijuana dispensaries and lounges. As we know, families have their choices of where to go for baseball camps. They've gone other places this past two summers, or at least this past summer, and we've, we've hurt because of that.
I'm sorry, that was not undue. That was the other.
We have the baseball hall of fame, which is the jewel for us, which does bring families in. We want to keep the baseball families coming. So I, I do think it's a big lie that if we opt in and I don't think we'll make more money with, from the marijuana with the marijuana than we will without the tourism that we lose because of it. So please, please opt out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Um, I didn't announce this at the beginning and perhaps I should have. This is a public hearing so that we can get feedback. Obviously, not everyone would necessarily come out on a rainy and clement weather night. The board is interested in your feedback in tonight's packet. We received numerous letters kind of for and against opting out. So we're taking all of this information in. I'm not closing the public hearing tonight because the vote, there will not be a vote tonight. The vote will be at our December 20th meeting. So this public hearing will be left open. So if, you know, the media can announce that. So we're still accepting written letters, emails, phone calls, et cetera, just for all that input from everyone. So we hope to hear from you. We haven't already. And again, December 20th is when we would be having a vote on this opt-out law. Um, we do have some more, a little more village business to do. And I know people are probably going to talk and chatter, so we'll take a few minutes break here and allow you to depart then. Or you're welcome to stay for a bit. It's not probably as exciting as the opt-out. Thanks, meeting, for the board of trustees. I passed out to, if you recall at our October meeting, based on the recommendations of ATR, we made a motion that certain things had to be corrected on the House of 14 Elm Street to secure it so that it didn't deteriorate further during the winter months. And those were outlined, everything that we wanted accomplished. And we set a date of November 19th for the owner to make those actions or the village would do so and then put a lien on their property. First point is that in our law, we actually don't have that mechanism to put a lien. If someone doesn't shovel their sidewalk, the public sidewalk, and our crew goes out and clears it, yes, that mechanism is in our law to put a lien on it. We don't have this mechanism. So it does require going to court and getting a, do you want to define what it is, Hart?
Well, it's an order. It's an order directing the repair or giving us the option then to repair.
All right.
And we've done this before, by the way, twice before. It's success. So it does, can be done, just so you're aware.
So after it, after that was made and our statement of everything that needed to be done, and we had a list of them, as you recall, from your October meeting packet, we moved that those things be done by November 19th. The village attorney Martin communicated with the owner this. And they were not done. A trailer was backed in with the materials, but nothing was done. So just at the end of last week, when we were going to proceed with actions, this letter was received from Mitchell's Realtors indicating that there's a signed contract. And you have a copy of this signed contract for buying that. And we had asked certain things. Obviously, in their letter, they said that the new owner would begin those renovations at the beginning of January, and it should be 2022. So they corrected that. We asked them for a copy of this sales contract. So you have that in your packet. The one thing that I was interested in getting was a letter from the buyer that they will do these repairs. And we do not have that in hand. So at this point, this board has to decide how to proceed. Do we allow, you know, do we go ahead and incur the costs? And have, it takes how long, Martin, to get this court order?
It's probably going to take about six to eight weeks. There's a 20-day period after we serve. They have 20 days to respond. And then we should be able to get a court date pretty quickly. But my guess is you're six to eight weeks.
So I'd like to make a motion on this. That the one thing that you, you want one thing here before you would be trying to grant them the delay, correct?
That's what, the minimum I wanted to bring to this board.
Okay. What I'd like to propose is that if they give us a letter from the buyer guaranteeing that the repairs will be made by the end of this week, we will give them the extension. If they don't, we won't.
Okay.
That gives them four days, they should be able to do this in four days.
Is that what this is, Richard? Notifying us that they need an extension, that it will be done by?
But they're not saying that. All right, so a motion's been made, but I do have comment. Is there anyone who's seconding this motion for further discussion on that?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
All right, seconded by Joe, okay.
I have some questions. They say in the cover letter that this is a contract that's fully executed. So that the contract would say, what remains to be done? There needs to be a closing? Okay, so when you turn to the purchase and sale contract, the contingencies at the unfairback five, first page, is the buyer able to start work as soon as contract signed by all parties? That's not a contingency. But what is that? And which parties are we talking about? The contractor, the reviewer, or the seller?
No, what that was, was they put that in, the buyer indicated they had a desire in order to preserve the building. It's a cash transaction, that they wanted to start work as soon as possible. The contractor that they believed was going to start indicated he was backed up on another project. So the buyer is in the, purportedly in the process of trying to find another contractor. It was the buyer asking for permission to get in and start working to preserve the building is what that was.
Right, and so that event hasn't happened. The closing hasn't happened.
No.
The building is still in peril. The obligation's on the seller to do it. Seller seems to be trying to lay this off onto the buyer who's not in a position to get it done, which is not in the village's interest from HPR's point of view, it seems to me. And then this, the second contingency is the building, or it's not a sentence, being sold as is. So that really is another way of saying we have a closed and titled transfer.
What it's saying, Joe, is that they're, they're not going to use any structural inspections, any concerns that they develop to back out. They're saying they accept it in the current condition and that they're aware of it.
Right, the operative word for me is sold, and it isn't sold. We understand that the contract says it's an as-in-sale. But it hasn't happened. And there's nothing in here that, that gives us a time certain by which anything is going to happen. So we're going to remain in limbo.
Correct.
And I think, I don't know, I just, on the, on the face of it, it looks as if the seller's obligation is being offloaded to the buyer who's not in a position to do what the village ordered in the first place. And so the question for me is, what do, what do we think of that? How does it affect our interest? And then what should we do? So I don't, another letter doesn't seem, we want deeds not worked.
I understand.
Can you clarify any of this? Because you spoke to the seller that essentially the things they were going to do, the buyer was going to come in and instantly remove. Now, is that?
What I was told, guys, this is just what I was told. I, it's, I'm just repeating it and regurgitating it. After we had notified them that there was, that they had till the 19th, apparently there was movement, they were able to, the seller came down in price and they told me that this buyer, given the fact that they could remove the back portion of the house, intended to, he intends to flip it. He's a contractor or someone who's willing to try and flip the building. And so he had contracted contractors about repairing it and what it was going to cost. He felt it was doable. That contractor is in the midst of trying to renovate another building elsewhere and got backed up. And at first told them, we, you can get in, I will get in, I'll get it done, I can do it. And then has not followed through. So the buyer has been sought by them to see if they can get another contractor. That's what the buyer's doing. I can't vouch for any of that. It is just what I've been told. So I'm leaving it to you guys. I wasn't about, this was above my pay grade to make a decision not to do something.
So I feel that it's imperative that something happens to close this building in as soon as possible, knowing that it is now early December and we could get three feet of snow at any point moving forward. And that will significantly impact the stability of this building. I agree with Joe. I believe that this building has been at the stage in contract multiple times in the past. And people have walked away from it. I also know firsthand that it is really hard to get a contractor in the village of Cooperstown in the middle of winter. And so I don't think that this very nice letter, which is dated after the date that we said the work had to be done, is any guarantee that, one, the building will sell, or two, that the work will be done by the proposed buyer. So I feel like we have to start moving forward with a court order to do the work.
Gotcha.
Supplement, as I recall, the amount of money involved to secure the building was about $25,000. It's tarps and plywood. It wasn't a lot of material, it wasn't a lot of time, but for a little, you get a lot of stabilization. And so, you know, the village was pretty clear when we confronted this issue in our October meeting. And the idea that we'll be well into winter and without anything. There's nothing here that says, in the event we don't do this, you're as, they will not front money. Will they do a deposit to us or whatever run it takes to secure? My point is Cindy's point is, this was supposed to be done a long time ago. So this delay is, while I appreciate Martin, judicial process can take a long time, it costs. There's nothing here that gives me any reassurance that this is going to be done.
I just told him I'd bring it in and let the board make its decision. I asked them to come, the brokers to come tonight because they've been having all the discussions and they, they begged, I don't say they begged up. They were unable to come tonight. So I said, look, and I'll take it, I'll explain your position.
I really appreciate some of these points there. Probably move forward, but take care of it.
Okay, so at the moment, we have a motion by Richard and seconded by Joe for really the point of discussion. I understand that.
I will draw my motion if Joe withdraws a second.
All right, that's what I was going to ask.
I would do it. And I, I will show. I know this is 2% of the purchase price we're talking about to secure the building. If it was $25,000, this doesn't seem to work that we want to do.
So we are going to proceed with the court order so that if we do the work, if it's not done at a timely fashion and we do the work, we can recover our funds via a lien on the property. So that's where we're at. Okay. So why don't we, I'd like a motion, because that was never part of the original motion, that we were going to go and get a court order. Because I don't think, I don't know if you did, but I don't know. We all thought that this was necessary to have a court order for this. I think we thought we could just put them.
Why you need a court order? Obviously, we're not judge and jury. We can't say that the building, we can't say that the building is in bad shape. We'll get our expert to say that it is. If they choose to fight this, they'll get theirs. And that's why, but it allows us if we get the order or they concede. And quite frankly, the two prior ones we brought to court both conceded and the work got done. So it, I think it's a pretty good sized hammer. It's just a cost because we'll be hiring an expert, there'll be some court costs and legal costs. But it, hopefully, the court will award them back to us as a lien on the property like they did before.
So who's going to make this motion to proceed with court proceedings in order to undertake this work? Should we undertake this work that it will get lien of the taxes? By Joe, seconded by Matt, all in favor? That was the only item of business I have. Well, thank you all. Thank you, Trina.